Alrighty, we're going to call the meeting in order for Tuesday, June 4th, for a regularly scheduled meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner North.
Here.
Commissioner Freya.
Here.
Vice Chairman, Commissioner Mill.
Here.
Commissioner Laird. Commissioner Nicholas.
As we got three, we have quorum. We'll get going here. Do I have a motion to move adjournment into executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen four four oh five?
Also move second.
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will be right back, ladies and gentlemen, at five thirty.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's all ruined. Yeah.
We share seats also, so it's really fun. One another's seats, and now they've all graduated to like. Which is very interesting. I just know she loves it.
And in there.
You know, that's. In San Luis. It's so gorgeous. It's saying. She keeps that.
No way you know.
She's. It's like.
You know. There's some. Back there. There's an.
Yeah. His duties. I've gone to my dinner. The first time. Right? It's like. Uh, it's selling. I need to. I don't think it's just. Yeah, they do. It's just. The show was. State boy, not just fabric. This.
It's.
It did. He is. He's. Absolutely. I would say it must be a different. I mean, I have a longer machine, although I can say something and I can finish it.
Yeah, I have seven or four. Super.
So. Definitely talk the band. I mean, I'd love to do.
And. We get long conversation.
Don't have a big difference.
And Tommy. Particularly. Yes.
It's wrong. And then I know some people like. Did.
Seven. Three is you have in West. I'll bring over. Kyle.
So here is.
You didn't talk so much. Water.
That's what you're traditional. Is there a name? Ask again. Yeah. Voice made in there.
In. Almost. It's. Did you? I'm trying to. It's. The most.
Seems just so.
It's for.
I, I, you know. So what? Because there's. Maybe in the. The sun. I love. Side. Already. Same part we ordered. Oh, it's. This is. But yet. Do you?
I need to go to. This guy.
He's.
I was thinking. Maybe you should show me. Center.
Yep, the chair. Hot. I don't know. They want to say you do this. Okay. Your words vary. That's. Your looks. Your motivation. Need to look.
And who prevented you from doing?
Part line or anything, or you just do your own thing.
Really? I wouldn't.
They come.
They would have.
It's really different.
Well, I saw. Looked at the video.
So what?
Somebody had. There was some guy behind you.
Oh, really?
Wasn't. Probably saw you were here on the side. You know, working.
So. I want me to talk with someone. You have to. Yeah. Well, and I'm like.
Because.
This is.
What Sarah told us you. Very apt. About. You know. That's. Yes.
You know.
We don't all.
Send you away. Correct.
I know. It's like. Fabulous. It's. On tap. Right?
Before.
Don't.
Yes.
You know.
He put him.
Made. I'm not sure. I just. I put it. Mine is. She was. Go to Georgia.
We have a cow. He has sleeping. Right?
So. Here.
But.
Show. Just. So. I. Yeah. It's.
He's. And. I'm. Wait. Your lights. Hey. Yeah. Uh.
Yeah.
Well. They had. So.
Yeah.
Brand new. Yeah. Okay. So.
They were. Isn't.
And I just.
There's. Okay. Like. Yeah. Stay out there. Or. Put in. That's. One. Yes. There we go. Are you. I'm. She wants. Call. I don't know. Um. Still. Interesting. Sir. Yeah. You know. You know what. You know what. Give me. Rage. I don't care. I'm teaching. I don't. Jim. Sure. You're. Fifteen. Everything. Alrighty. You'll come back in order. You're in the habit. Let's leave.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Moving to the consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval?
To move. Sir.
We have a mo- motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Very none, passed. Um. Next is contracts, agreements, resolutions. Uh, specifically for election judge wages, Tracy. Can I get a report on that?
Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, this is to meet the statutory, statutory requirements of twenty-two eight dash one sixteen to set the election judge wages for the upcoming election season.
Any questions? Do I have a motion for, to approve?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, those. If I could. Uh, aye for approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Against. Very none, passed. Move on into public hearing. Uh. Here from staff on. MS twenty-four dash one, Tetonka Run Major Subdivision.
Good evening Chairman Commissioners, Sean Gustafson, ECS engineer, your interim planner. So. Uh. The, uh, I'll just go ahead and give you the report here on that. Uh, the applicant to talk or run major subdivision through its owner Wyoming Land and Acquisitions LLC. And John Miller requests approval of the Tetonka. Run major subdivision, a major subdivision consisting of twenty lots of a parcel of approximately. Three twenty-two point five acres in the urban agricultural zoning district. Uh, the property is located east side of Interstate twenty-five. I twenty-five north, excuse me, approximately three miles north of the intersection of Orms of Your Road and Interstate twenty-five. Uh. Planning Commission re- uh, recommendation, the planning commission heard the case in May fourteenth. And unanimously voted to recommend approval, the tonk run major subdivision with the condition that sitting bowl road be maintained and kept open until such time as the new sitting bowl road is constructed. Uh, the planning commission did not, did raise some concerns about maintaining access to surrounding lands via sitting bowl as it exists until the new highway, uh, service road access for sitting bowl can be constructed. And sitting bowl can be relocated in the new location for the subdivision plat. Um. Items to be considered by the B O C C. Sitting Bowl Road is not legal access for the surrounding parties. It has been used without permission or easement to date. Uh, does the owner have right to shut off the old location down until the new road is built is, is a question. The, um. Contention has been made that sitting bowl road is an FAA access road, that is correct. Uh, that is an exclusive easement, that information has come up just lately, and I think you guys have gotten some. Uh, information on that. Uh, that is an exclusive access to the FAA for, uh, access to their, uh, site, their Vortac, I believe they call it, up on twenty mile hill there. Uh. The established access, uh. Uh, well, yeah, and that access continues to exist north of the subdivision. Um. At, on the same note, uh, there's been some communication with the, uh, with YDOT, Adam Kennedy specifically handles approaches with YDOT. That approach was not permitted, that is correct, but that approach has been grandfathered, uh, in, it's built substantially or fairly substantially to YDOT's, uh. Standards and has been grandfathered in, and we did also gather that information from YDOT. I think the main reason the, uh, FAA access not come up to begin with is that was not a recorded document, which does not. Make any difference, but it's, it was not a recorded documents and, and easily attainable. Uh, at that time, uh, one spoke in favor, six spoke in opposition, uh, from the, from the, uh, crowd. Um. Considerations. Um. One, one consideration, I'll bring that up first, is, uh, the fact that, uh, via emails, uh, nothing other than emails at this point, uh, but written that, uh. Through Bill Ferenger and, and our contacts with Shad Stewart, uh, with the FAA. That, uh, they will. Work with the applicant and in the end, they just want to have, want to have access, of course, the easement will have to be rewritten at that point in time, uh, so that they can have access, and if their access is on public roads, that's fine, but they'll. They'll, um, that, and we've gotten word, at least through Bill Ferenger, that that will happen, so. Um. Road and Bridge had no comment on this plat. Uh, the Neptuna County Soil Conservation District, or Conservation Department indicated favorable soils for construction as well as septic systems. Uh, Neptuna County Health Department committed. Though, through the chapter twenty-three report as non-adverse conditions on the site, uh, water wells and septic systems, uh. It would be recommended that the owner has had their water tested regularly for quality. There is apparently some, some question on that, but, uh, there are a lot of successful wells up there. The, uh, Fire District had no comment, the, uh, Neptuna County D I, G I S received and accepted the plat. Uh, Neptuna County Assessor reviewed and accepted the plat. Uh, Neptuna County Surveyor reviewed and accepted the plat. Uh, YDOT issued, uh, a drive entrance permit, uh, instead of just utilizing the grandfather type thing, they, they issued the drive entrance permit, uh, here just a few days, a few days ago. Um. Major subdivision definition, land division of two or more parcels of a hundred and forty acres or less and not classified as a simple subdivision. And that is how this subdivision works. Uh, chapter four, section five, criteria for approval, just go through that, criteria one, the subdivision is consistent with the Neptuna County Development Plan. The Neptuna County Zoning Resolution and the Zoning Resolution, uh, that this standard is met. The proposed Tetonka subdivision lot areas are in compliance with the twenty-twenty-two zoning resolution, the zoning. Is urban agricultural and has a ten acre minimum, all lots proposed in subdivision are over the minimum requirement. The intent and purpose of the urban agriculture is to provide for and protect properties of ten acres or larger in urbanized area, which is used for agricultural residential purposes, according to two point oh five point oh eight. Uh, the subdivision is in conformant, criteria two, excuse me, subdivision is in performance with, uh, general provisions, chapter one, subdivision standards, chapter seven. Uh, this standard is met, the proposed Tetonka Run Major Subdivision. Is in performance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards for the twenty thirteen Neptuna County Subdivision Regulations. The applicant has provided evidence, criteria three, the applicant has provided evidence that a sufficient water supply system will be. Acquired in terms of quantity, quality and dependability for the type of subdivision proposed and is determined in accordance with the standard set forth in the Water Supply Systems, Appendix P. Uh, this standard is met, the proposed Tetonka subdivision will not have a centralized water system. Uh, which is stated on the plat, each lot will be served by an individual onsite well, DEQ has issued a non-adverse recommendation for the subdivision. Uh, in this regard, uh, with the previous, um, quality testing recommended that I mentioned. Um. Criteria four, the applicant has provided evidence that public sewage disposal system will be established and. If other methods of sewage disposal are proposed. Evidence the system complies with local laws, regulations and its appendix. Oh. This standard is met, the proposed Tetonka subdivision will not have a centralized sewage system, which is stated on plat, the lot will be served by individ-. The lots will be served by individual non-on-site sewage systems, the DEQ has issued a non-adverse recommendation for the subdivision in that respect. Uh, criteria five. Uh, the applicant has provided evidence to show all areas of the proposed subdivision which may. Involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazardous or requiring special permission or precautions. Have been identified by the applicant and the proposed uses of the areas are compatible with such conditions, this standard is met. The, uh, Neptuna County Conservation District indicated favorable soils for construction, wells and septic systems. Uh, again, it is recommended the waters, that they have their water tested regularly, I should throw in one other thing there, there is some thought that the, uh, Midwest water system that runs past the area. May at some point be able to serve thi- this area of Neptuna County, so.
Mister Chairman.
I, that, that's a want, uh, that, that's Midwest would like that is what I am hearing, that is not a for sure.
Mister. I've got a question, do we currently know how many water wells there are in that area, because I know that's a very dry area for the area and. What the water quality is.
I, I do not know, uh, how many there are, I, I do know that there has been, uh, some quality where they need to do some treatments, mainly, uh, uh. Chlorination to, to treat the water at times, not all of it.
Okay, but those wells, you don't, we don't know about anything specifically in this.
No.
Area. Okay.
Okay, criteria, let's see, criteria six.
Sir.
I'm sorry.
Real quick, since we're breaking your.
Yes.
Concentration here. Can you explain a little bit, what does non-adverse mean when DEQ uses it?
They, they use it non-adverse to say they have no issue with the subd- with, with that, they feel that the water and or sewer conditions are, are good enough for the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Necessary, uh, criteria six, necessary services include fire, police, protection schools, recreation utilities, open space and transportation system are available to serve the proposed subdivision, the standard is met. The proposed Tetonka subdivision is within Neptuna County Sheriff's jurisdiction and requires no new services. Um, criteria seven, the subdivision appears to be compatible with the surrounding area and not detrimental to the future development of the area and not detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. We feel the standard is met, the proposed talk, Tetonka subdivision use, uses will remain urban agricultural, there is no detriment to health, safety or general welfare of the inhabitants or the area of the county. Uh, criteria eight and nine, ISD and finances, uh, documentation satisfactory to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, that the improvement and service district requirements have been met, documentation that the subdivider has adequate financial resources to develop complete water and or sewage systems. Or any facility proposed represent, represented to be the responsibility of the subdivider, but not limited to the above mentioned. Standards eight and nine are met, the required services are the responsibility of each lot owner, roadways will be constructed as the lots sell and no financial guarantee is, is required. With that, we have a few, um, exhibits. Uh. We've got the plat and I do, do note on the plat, this is one other, um. Recent development, uh, that on the, uh, this is the eleventh. Of April. Um, yes. The Wyoming, uh, land deeded this land to John Miller. So, uh, the signature line that's in there for. That Alan Olson, Olson, I believe, needs to be changed to John Miller, so, but other than that, that, uh. Plat is in compliance and that's not anything that, uh, that Charnak County Surveyor had in front of him when he, uh, when he reviewed the subdivision. The next, uh, exhibit is an aerial view of the parcel outlined in red. Uh, as you can see, the, uh. What, what is considered to be sitting bowl road is actually. Within the BB Brooks area, the rest of that diagonal road that comes down to the frontage road there is unnamed, uh, and is, that's the exclusive portion of the airport access. Or the FAA access, I should say. Um, the other scar that you see in there is the, uh, running north and south is a pipeline which is, which is shown in the plat. Let's see, the next subdivision just zoomed out a little bit farther with the, um. With the, uh. Proposed layout, again, all lots are above ten acres. Uh, and the final one is just the northern portion, portion of the, of the project. There have been. Several things brought up. Late in the game, if you will. Uh, and, and with that, I think they've been. I think they've been handled. While our, uh, our recommendation would still be to pass, to do, to pass this subdivision from staff, we, uh, would also understand a tabling to consider these new developments, so. And I'm done.
Thank you.
Alright, um. One of my main concerns is the, the access to the VOR tower. Uh. What is the proposed, since it's not part of this presentation, can you explain a little bit better to the public and everybody how that would be handled?
Yes, uh, this, this is my understanding of it, and I know the applicant is here and maybe, and I believe his surveyors here, so maybe they can help with that if, uh, I don't get it right here, but. Think it's better shown on the plat. Yeah, on the plat, the, there's a platted road. This area here. Up through the middle of the subdivision back over. Those reach. Well. That, uh, is what I understand was, uh, presented to the FAA and they were fine with that.
And that, that'll be a perpetual easement as well?
I'm sure that's what they would like, yes, but it would have to be a rewritten easement to them, so.
Any questions from staff? Or for staff? Very none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of that MS twenty-four one to approach the lecture and identify yourself and your address.
Commission. Assistant Chair. Jason Knopf, Edge Engineering, Edge Engineering Group, forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road, representing the applicant at this time, it's the survey was, and survey was done through CEPI. With Bear, Bill Ferenger, and he is not able to be here today. Um, so the, the sitting bowl road would get, will get constructed and get tied in before the old, old road would get, uh. Reseeded. Replatted back into the, in the land, so that there will always be an access through, and then that will, that easement will get put in place before any work will get done, so that. so that that can be put into the right spot and location as construction goes. So, according to that, with that new easement, uh, coming to light, so that'll get done before that road can get built, getting that easement put in place. Um, wells, another question on water wells. We studied twenty-three water wells in this location. Um, there's, there's four within forty acres of the subdivision and the rest are within a mile, two miles, we expanded out our study on this. Um, we did tests, water quality on several wells and we did quantity tests on, on the adjacent wells to this property with the ones that were within forty acres. Um, the quality of this water, which comes out of the aquifer is pretty common with all of BB, BB Brooks properties that we've tested, uh, is very high in TDS, so dissolved solids. Um, we recommend everyone to do like a whole house filter, uh, as your water coming into your house to, to drop that TDS level down. It's, it's high in calcium, so it can be very hard. So we also require, we don't require, we recommend to people that are drilling into this aquifer also to look at a, uh, water softener as part of their water system to bring their quality up. Very common, um, for all the houses in this area. The second rock aquifer is actually better water quality, but it's deeper, so not a lot of people in this residence go down to that six hundred, seven hundred foot la- layer. Uh, the first walk aquifer is a, is, uh, protected by the Cody shell. It's about sixty to eighty feet down and there's ten feet of saturation zone on top of that shell. Um, and then, uh, the next aquifer is also protected between the two, so they're both protected layers, um, top and bottom caps, um, and is also a shell layer. The shell layers are like ten to twenty feet, um, a- as you go from aquifer to aquifer. And each aquifer is a very sandy material. Um, pumping rates were fifty gallons per minute with, uh, eight foot drawdown, uh, with reproduction on, on the wells that we tested. Um, other questions? I think I covered the main questions that you guys brought up during that presentation, I guess, let me know.
Um, Jason, you're saying the first, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Jason, you're saying the first layer or the first quarter table is about sixty feet deep and that's one.
Sixty, eighty, depending on where you're at, within that three hundred, uh, acres and then you hit your saturation zone, ten feet, and then you got about a ten to fifteen foot shell layer and then you're in your, so most of the wells are residential or ten, hundred, two hundred and ten, hundred and twenty, summer shower, but most of them get right through that top layer of that Cody shell and they, then they're developed right there.
Okay, and, and there's not any problems?
No, it, it, um, the gradient of the aquifer is, is flat, so your, um, errance of influence when you're pumping is not very wide. Um, we calculate the area of influence on this aquifer to be about seventy feet when you're pumping at fifty gallons per minute rate, um, for your, in that sand material. Um, it's not on some sort of a large grade plane, so there's no water rights, um, affected a below grade of this. Um, it's a pretty confined aquifer.
So, with that being said, Jason, if you end up having all these developed and they're all pumping, what's that gonna do, the aquifer level in that area?
The aquifer is, right now, what we've tested is it regenerates, is if for each house, if they, each house was to pull fifty gallons per minute, the aquifer would be able to regenerate each well adequately without influencing the next well. Seventy, seventy foot, a seventy foot influence is what we're calculating and with a ten to fifteen acre lots, so you're not, and no one puts a pump in the ground, that fifty gallons a minute. Usually you're looking at twenty, twenty gallons a minute for a house supply. Um, if you were to, so the, the perk rates on this soils is around, uh, three to thirty minutes an inch. Um, it's a silty sand, sand on top, goes to silt, gets to compacted silt, turns into then a saturated sand layer. If you were to pour contaminated liquid on top of the surface at four hundred gallons per day, it would take one point three years to get to the aquifer. Uh, that geologists really like to know that for septic rates, I, gives you your septic.
So you're saying it's pretty tight?
It's really tight, so we don't recommend anything beyond what's standard in the county rec- requirements of a hundred foot separation from wells to septic.
Okay.
You good?
I'm good on that. Anybody else have any questions?
Yep, couldn't really like this lot size because you didn't want to see people developing smaller lots, so you picked this, this size particularly instead of going to ten, going to the smaller ones or going to twenty and allowing people to split it easily. So this is, if people want to split or do something, they've got to come in here and actually move some lines around and do something crazy, so that's kind of why we chose this size is to, to limit any additional try to developments of what's going on in this, limited to what you're looking at as your fifteen acre size.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody else wish to speak in favor? All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of MS twenty-four dash one, approach the lectern. Anyone opposed? Somebody opposed, wish to speak? Sir, if you could, give us your name and your address.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Anthony Engelmann, thirty-one fifty-one Broken Trail out of BB Brooks. Didn't think that I would be, uh, going first tonight. I don't think I'm the most affected party regarding where the subdivision's at and what it's going to be done. Um, legal challenges to how that's platted notwithstanding regarding the covenants, um, and FAA is right away notwithstanding. Uh, my concerns about a subdivision like that are all about efficacy. When last time I stood in front of you all, it was at the end of a miserable construction experience with then, uh, Central Wyoming Homes LLC. And at the conclusion of that hearing where the license of, uh, Mr. Miller was suspended, this committee admonished him to both make it right with me and noted that he would be on probation for what had happened. And since that time, I can count no fewer than ten individual construction projects. Most of those individuals are here tonight who can attest to how their construction projects were deboggled with how funds were mismanaged, how materials are misappropriated, very similar stories to what had happened to us. And when I first was approached by Greg, when he reached out to me, uh, Greg Gerard regarding our issue with our sewer and our septic system that had been cut out of the ground after it'd been inspected by the county and then backed up into our home after it had been backfilled, uh, he was as surprised as anybody, but not more surprised than me to hear about the other instances that had happened after that construction project and after his license was reinstated and he was allowed to continue to, uh, build homes out at BB Brooks. Uh, my number one concern is whether or not he can even get it done and can get it done legally and can get it done ethically and can get it done without leaving twenty homeowners in the lurch, holding the bag for what has been a miserable experience for many of us out on the ranch. So, I would, I would ask you, uh, for an apology to those individuals who were, um, allowed to seek him out in good faith, that the county had given that construct, a contractor a license, knowing that he would be able to finish their projects and do it on budget and do it ethically. And that certainly hasn't been the experience of, uh, many of the individuals here tonight. So I think at a minimum, this project has to be tabled until that can be vetted, until those parties can be made whole, until, uh, restitution can be resolved on those issues. That's all I have to say about that.
Mr. North. Mr. Engel, do you, uh, are you currently, has your situation been rectified?
No. And we clarify what you mean by rectified. Has restitution been made? No. Have materials been returned? No. Has financial recompense been restored? No.
Have, uh, you taken any action?
I have exhausted several avenues, none of which have been completely exhausted at point. I had notified this committee that we were waiting to finish this project to evaluate the complete totality of the, the financial cost of, of getting this resolved and we're still probably three or four months away from getting done that, getting, getting that done. Uh, we did get an occupancy certificate from the county, um, but that home was for sure not finished and we are still having to re-manage drainage from, uh, foundations port below grade, we're having to redo septic, we're having to, um, address issues with the foundation where concrete wasn't pinned or supported properly for load bearing, uh, parts of the home on the back patio. And when that all resolves and we have a dollar amount tied to it, we'll be, uh, seeking damages at that time.
Okay, so you haven't, you haven't filed for legal action against him at this point in time?
Not civil legal action, no.
Okay.
We're exploring criminal options at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Again, I'd ask at this time, any individuals who wish to speak in opposition, approach the lectern. Hearing none? Not seeing anybody? Go ahead and close. Please state your name and your address when you get up there.
My name's Matt Hewitt, I'm at sixteen sixty-eight East Orangeby Road. Uh, so I also had a, uh, dealing with John, he's trying to build my home. Um, I guess my, my main concern is, is the financial portion of it. Um, I have allocated money to it and I'm sitting currently in a, a home of roughly forty percent complete. Um, I, I just don't see how he can actually get this project complete. My main concern is that I just don't want to see anybody else go through the same situations that a lot of us have. That's, that's where I stand. I just don't, what, what we have gone through is, in my opinion, it's unacceptable. So I, I thank you for your time and, uh, any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Alert. You say your home isn't complete, how long has he been working on it?
Uh, he started last May, June, I believe it was June.
And why, why hasn't it been completed?
Um, so he is, he's claiming that, uh, I owe him more money, um, and I asked him what for. He cannot give me that, all he can tell me is, is, is payout sheet doesn't match what he's been paid. Um, but at the same time, there is, uh, multiple parts to this project, which he's actually told my lender that have not been completed.
So you think you've paid him in full?
I have not paid in full completely to the contract, no, I do not, I have not done that, no. But I have paid him in full for a good majority of the project.
Do you have a written contract with it?
Yes, sir, I do.
And does it say how you should pay?
Uh, n- no, sir, it's just, it says, uh, upon his, his request, I believe.
Have you had a lawyer look at the contract?
Yes, sir, I have.
And what have you been told?
Uh, the lawyer, we've, he, the lawyer thought that we could get this done through mediation or through, uh, negotiations and at this time that has not, has not happened. Um, we were supposed to have a meeting about a week ago, um, John did show up on the property to discuss that and then he ended up leaving without discussing or trying to do any mediation whatsoever.
So i- is there an overall price for the house in the contract?
Yes, sir, there was.
And how much was the price?
The price for the total completion was three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And how much have you paid so far?
I believe it's around two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
And so there's no question you owe him the rest, but he just hasn't finished the job?
Yes, sir, I have paid him in completion for the septic, which the septic tank has floated up, it's never been tied into the home. I've paid him in completion for the framing material, there is no porch that has been installed, which is part of the framing. I've paid him in full for the roofing material, there is no roof boot on the roof, which has been allowing water, snow, everything else into the home. Uh, there's no rake trim on the, on the house. Um, the side materi- side steel that was installed, was installed improperly. It is, um, a- at a point where wind is going to take that off within five years. Um, I have a history in construction from Illinois. I, I, I have a, a very good knowledge of how that material should have been installed.
And so what you're asking us is, you, you want us to know how he's performed your job and you don't want to see him do that to other people, is that basically why?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other individuals wish to speak in opposition, please approach. State your name and address, if you would, sir.
Paul Marhoff, twelve twelve five Tomahawk. I was here at the last meeting and explained, uh, about, uh, picking up trash and I hadn't been in town long, but now I figured out that he screwed the neighbor over no roof. Couple of months later, I don't know how long this has been sitting, he screwed me out of twenty grand and he admitted to it after the last meeting. Wants to make it right, wants to make it right, this mentality's not going to fly. And he's, he's on Seven Butte Drive, which is a, a, um, HOA road. That fence should be pr- fenced all the way completely out before he even does anything over there because he's had run-ins with the ranchers, he lets his animals run at large, we don't need a bunch of city-hits coming out here and ruining it for everybody. I mean, he's trash-balling all over from the construction job to his, uh, but just for the professional side of it, it's, it's, this is not going to work. I mean, what, these people are going to be coming out on our road. That's Seven Butte Drive right there in the, be the east end of it. That's an HOA road.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Questions?
Mr. Alert. So these are all dirt roads in the subdivision?
Yeah.
And what's your understanding of who maintains those?
Uh, we pay an association dues to maintain the roads.
And who does the maintenance?
Uh, it's subbed out. I'm not sure exactly who it is now, but it, it flies through, so I, I don't know.
So they're not, they're not county roads?
They're not county roads. They're private roads. Any questions?
Uh, no, thanks.
And I think you should have writing for that, uh, FFA deal too, because calling Natrona County Airport's not going to get that solved. Thank you.
Well, we're, we're certainly concerned about the Natrona County Airport, I can tell you that.
Excuse me?
We're concerned about the Natrona County Airport.
Thank you.
All right, this time, anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Please approach the lectern. Please state your name and address, sir.
Steven Jones. My name's Steve Taylor, I live on twelve three seventy-five Tomahawk, right next to Paul, just talked to you. Um, everyone says that one road is, there's no legal access through it, but the people who they are purchasing from, it says Olson, that's the land company who originally bought all that BB Brooks stuff and developed it, they put a sign and they moved it when they did a land swap. They put it there on there and said, "We could use it to go through," because they owned it. Now they're selling to get out. Along with this parcel here that he's getting here, they have also put up for sale another parcel just up the north of it, the north boundary of this property, and they've also sold another two thousand acres, they're putting up for sale, I should say, down by Orangeby Road. So they're selling a lot of stuff. But we all use this road and all the BB Brooks roads are private and they're all posted. And we've talked to, we'd be now, it's the sheriff and undersheriff, they talked to the DA a few years ago, we had trespass issues. People can be cited for trespassing anywhere in BB Brooks. There's no public access to go through to go to the BLM lands. But in the process of this, this road will not get done, right? If you look in the same thing, they said they're going to develop it as he sells the parcels. That's, I'm going to say it this way, I'm sorry, but that's doing it half-assed, half-assed. It's not right, because the other HOAs have developed out on Gold, what do you want to call it out there, east of town out there on, not Coal Creek, but, um, going towards the mountain, um, can't think of that road's name now.
Hat Six.
Hat Six Road. All them subdivisions, when they were put in out there, were a bunch of them really big, fancy homes have been built in the last twenty years. Those roads were all built before anyone started buying. Same with BB Brooks and every time they made a new section, roads were done. But the power's another thing, there's just no power out there. The power company has also said that they're almost out of power that they can pull on the line without redoing the line. They ain't going to redo that line anytime fast, costs millions of dollars. So people can't get power now that live close to it, why would we put another subdivision to tack that line even harder? Because once he hits max, what's it going to say when you start having wind and pole on it? How many more times are we going to have issues with losing power out there? Haven't happened much, but there's been times power poles up on top, the insulators go bad, they start on fire. I mean, the, the, the needs updated, it is, it's really an old line. I mean, the, the, the needs updated, it is, it's really an old line. But, I am not for this, because there's just, it doesn't need to happen, we don't have enough protections for the people. That's my only concern here, because there's also, and I brought up the last meeting and everyone kind of shrugged it off. There's been, there's another person in this room that's seen it, and I have seen it recent, most recent of any, but there is a black-footed ferret out there. And I don't know, they're very shy, I've lived here my whole life. I've never seen them in person and they're very distinct once you see them. Kind of be nice to protect them if they're not being monitored in that section. And there's prairie dog fowls in that, in this allotment too, that come and go. Right now, they're kind of limited because we had a plague that went through out there about three, four years ago, it killed a lot of them. So.
All righty, any questions?
I, I do. I was concerned too when I heard the issue about that he's only going to do the road as the house is sold, because that would mean that thing's going to be under construction and dirt and everything's going to be flying around there in front of people's houses that are built.
Yep.
Is that how he did the one where you, you're in now?
He didn't build these roads.
Oh, he didn't build any?
Nope. And there was a long time, I was even before I moved in out there, that John Miller wasn't allowed to work in BB Brooks because of stuff that went gone. Now he supposedly is, but I don't know for sure.
Okay, so the other thing, have you checked with the power company about this other issue you've raised, is, in terms of the, the power issues?
About not having enough?
Yes.
That line has seventy-two hundred volts and I don't know what the owns are on it, but they won't give me nothing in writing. I've jumped their estimators onsite out there, up the road for stuff they're doing now, they won't give me nothing.
They won't explain anything to you?
Nope, they give you a very generic explanation, but how many, how long do you think it'd take them to do twenty miles of power line to rebuild it? Put big, pull bigger lines. They, they ain't going to do it on the poles they got because their poles are spaced too far apart. They're going to close up their gaps, they're going to put bigger wire to pull more voltage. So that's going to take a long time.
One of the things that you said that alerts me as a county commissioner is that you don't think it's safe for the people to live out there.
Well, right now, it's not so, the safety, there's two ways into this section. And if one road is closed, a lot of times we go out the other way. And right now, if you look where this subdivision is, there is, um, one, two, three, four, five, seven, I want to say seven homes right now going out this way that live on Tomahawk and that northern road. Because the south road's gotten so rough, it's better driving a barge and make a new road.
And who, who's, who takes care of that road?
The BB Brooks ones? It's our contractor who we got out there, his name's Justin, um, I can tell you who it is. What? Dykes? Justin Dyke?
Because we have a, we have a lot of non-county roads that we, we're only by statute able to take care of county roads, so I like to explain that to people. We can't, there's our road guy right there, we, we can only fix roads that are owned by the county and then under some circumstances, but I don't like seeing roads, I don't like hearing roads that aren't being taken care of and nobody knows who's responsible.
I build roads for a living. And I do it in a private facility now, because of where I just, over the years I've left, working for McMurray or JTL from back in the day here. And I build roads, but there's not, the sand, the sand is terrible, I mean, anyone knows sands, it's bad. You got to put clays in it, you got to dirty it up, you got to make it like a W base, you got to compact it, use water. And that costs a lot of money to build roads, especially, I mean, like when you guys did, um, Orangeby Road, that was a lot of money and a lot of truckloads that they hauled in from out of Alkova pit. And it took them a long time and that road took
What, what is the one big safety issue? You were referring to safety issues. And I'm interested in knowing a little more detail about that, what do you think is unsafe?
Well, this property here for, I live, I live on Tomahawk, so it's back in there another mile, a mile and a half from this location. If you build a bunch of homes right there, what happens when you get all that many people? You got kids that start fires, I'm downwind. And I got horses. So my concern is, know that. And you're going to have trespass issues, they're not, no one stays there, pe- people from Twenty Mile Hill come down there and they drive through here all the time. It's hard to call the cops because time they show up, they're long gone. I mean, I vote no on this, just for the subdivision part of it, let alone that Mr. Miller ain't going to fix it, he ain't going to do it right. I've seen his work. And I work for some friends here in town, I help them out. They've done, told me flat out that they will not work with him unless he pays cash upfront. And there's been some other contractors in Casper over the years in town here who have had those same things with other companies. From getting fuel to supplies, cash only.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I would ask anybody else. Sir, if you could, say your name and
My name is Roy Gerard. Box five eighty, Casper, Wyoming. And I would say John Miller probably does a pretty good job building those houses. But it's just like a damn football game, if you don't finish, what good has it done you? And I, I, uh, I'm not going to take a lot of your time, but I tell you a deal with John Miller that happened to me. His dogs are getting into my cows, I have the lease, and his dogs are getting into my cows. And I called him and told him and he said, go to hell, I ain't tying them dogs up. Well, the cows, the neighbor called and his dogs had a cow mine down, ate the nose out of her and they had to shoot the cow. Well, I, I, the dogs were, they're good dogs. And they jumped, jumped in my truck. So I called John. And this is a couple of years ago, I called John, I said, John, those dogs are in my cows, you go to hell, you son of a bitch. He said, my dogs are tied up. Well, I said, I read the names of the collar on the dogs that were licking my face there. And he said, uh, he, he said, well, bring them home. So I did. And the other day, his dogs are in those cows again, we have pictures of it. And he, he told my boy, if you shoot one of my dogs, I'll kill ten of your cows. Do you want somebody like that in a subdivision? I mean, they want to obey the covenants? And another thing too, I know all run for office and you Democrats are fighting these things and stuff, but you need to do what's right. And by God, it's just like the football game, if you don't finish, you don't win. John Miller does not finish because people have told me that. And I really appreciate you guys letting me talk.
Sir? Sir? Please come back. I'm sure we've got some questions.
Yeah.
I, I've got a question too though first. Um, have you talked to the sheriff about?
Oh yeah, they've been out, they, they went by and talked to him and told all the neighbors to tie their dogs up, but his dogs are still loose. Now, they have a record of it. You bet.
And you have the law police of those cows on that property?
Yeah, I do, I do, I've had it for twelve years, ten or twelve years, you know.
And I'm not saying you should, but you do have the right to shoot them dogs.
I know, but I thought that, you know, that, you know, we'd be a neighbor and take those dogs home, but it didn't work.
Hell, he's talking, it doesn't sound very neighborly.
That's right. And they're knocking calves out of my cows, but he's still, he told my boy, I'll shoot ten cows for every damn dog you shoot. Well, do you want somebody like that with a subdivision next to you?
And then he goes to jail.
Huh?
Then he'll go to jail.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying, I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying you have the legal right to do it.
Yeah, I knew, I knew, I didn't want to do it, I didn't, I was going to shoot him, but I didn't, but I should have, you know, but I just want to be a good guy and honest and all these people coming to me are complaining about this no finish deal. And I just wanted to stick up for him for what's right, that's all we want.
Okay, I appreciate you trying to work with your neighbor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frill has a question, I believe.
Mr. Gerard, I just wanted to add to what he was saying, if those dogs were as friendly as what you said they were and they jumped in the back of your truck, the very first place I'd take him is right to Metro and drop him off, he can deal with him directly through Metro at that point in time, you're not putting a situation where you got to put dogs down and, and maybe it'll take care of the situation, maybe it won't, obviously being nice and taking them back didn't help you out, but if it happens again, that would be the suggestion I would make in that.
Thank you, you know, this, this deal going to sheriff and the law and getting attorneys and all that, but I don't pay for those calves, they knocked out those cows when I ran. But I just want you guys to understand and as God and my judge, I'm telling you the truth. And I sure thank you.
Mr. Gerard? You got some more questions?
I know you're a gentleman. I appreciate you coming here, thank you.
Thank you, I, I appreciate you guys, you know, it's just what's right. You know, that John Miller fellow can build the nicest house, but then he, he, well, you, I don't need to go, I don't need to take your time, love.
Sounds like you got one more question.
Mr. Gerard, I, I do appreciate you coming in, but, um, he is liable. He is legally liable for any damage to livestock.
Yeah, but how can you prove it? I mean, there's dead calves out there and where are you going to find the cow? She's a, you know, I, I'm going to have to do something if he doesn't do it, but he wants to start a subdivision, he won't even obey the covenants on his forty acres, for Christ's sake. You know, I, I don't want to cause anybody any trouble, but I, I am telling you the truth. And that shoots ten cows for every dog I kill. How in the hell am I ever going to prove that? He shot the cows. But why would he, somebody wanting a subdivision, why in the hell would he say that? I mean, he's a pretty responsible person, I'd say.
Mr. Gerard, I used to prove that people shot people when I'd get a hold of the gun and the bullet out of the people. I know people who can match those up. So if he shot ten of your cows, the, the sheriff would be out there taking his guns and, and inspecting those guns and if they, and if they, they fit the rifling, then he's got a real problem. I just hope you don't ever have another problem about somebody saying that to you, because that isn't right. Now, it's another issue about this subdivision and, and whether we should allow him to do this. One of the things I don't like is we have, we have people who say they're going to do certain things and they don't do them. It's, it's a different world, Mr. Gerard, it isn't like, you know. When you were a young man, your, your word was good and yours still is. But I thank you for coming down here.
Thank you guys, I, I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else that was, speak against? If you would, please say your name and address.
Jessica Taylor, uh, one two three seven five Tomahawk Road. Live kind of kitty corner, or kitty corner to where John's at. Never had a dealing with him, never met him personally, I've only just seen the destruction that he is capable of. So, we, everyone's talked about him not finishing projects. He, look at his house. Look at his home, his barns, they're all unfinished, he can't even finish his own projects. And you would kind of think that at your own home, you would take care of your stuff and put the roof on, do the siding and actually finish it, right? So, he can't even do that. Several houses, uh, that he has built, so I'm going to go against Roy, they are not quality homes. Um, we watch them fall apart year to year. Most of the owners that have originally purchased those homes or built by him are, are gone. And I think it's for pretty obvious reasons why, because every single one of them have had problems. Uh, he is notorious for scabbing these homes together. Using miscolored siding, making them look like crap and then just painting over it, leaving them only partially finished. Not finishing, you know, the construction process in full. And it just looks horrendous when you have a house with three different colors siding on it. It's just fact. At least one of those homes was sold and right before they sold it, they painted it, so at least now it's one color and pretty looking, but I've watched the roof fly off two of home, two of these homes in recent years, um, from the steel panels. I don't know what he's doing wrong there, but I'm sure he's just not finishing the job appropriately. I just lost my train of thought. Um, so I've, obviously ultimately, you know, this is a terrible idea. I probably wouldn't feel one way or another if it were somebody else that were doing the subdivision. You know, I'm, I'm the kind of person that I'll give someone the benefit of the doubt. Um, I'm not one to I mean, automatically judge somebody, you know, whatever, but anybody but him. I, I beg of you.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Lurd?
Do you, do you view do you view this could be, um, harmful to the neighbors if, if we allow this subdivision? Do you, like the one gentleman was talking about earlier? Would it threaten the safety of little kids and people that are there using the roads and what have you?
Um, probably. Uh, he did do one small remodel on the BB Brooks roads. Um, it was like a eight thousand, nine thousand dollar job. He has no business messing with roads, he does not understand it. The whole point of that project was to move a, a mud puddle that forms the bottom of a hill. And then he did the work or whatever, all he did was just shove that mud pile about thirty feet further down into the intersection. He claims, or at that last meeting, that his roads would be up to county, county road spec. He lied to their faces, there is no way he will make those roads that good. Let alone constructing as he goes, we're just giving him the opportunity to scab everything together. And giving him that opportunity to not finish projects, leave everything out to the wayside and do as he pleases. And even speaking on the moral character of him, um, Roy mentioned obviously the dog problem. Um, it's not just the dogs, uh, it's his horses are always out. And then I watched him numerous times getting his side-by-side, go out, cross everyone else's properties trying to bring his horses in. Or on the flip side of that, when the Gerard's cows get into his property because he won't fence it or won't close it, he then uses side-by-side to corral them and push them out of his property, which I'm pretty sure is cow rustling. Isn't it?
I don't know about that, but it, it sounds dangerous to me that it
Yeah.
Somebody could get hurt doing that.
He, he, he's reckless.
Would you agree that, that somebody could get hurt doing that?
Yes. And any interaction that these people seem to have with him are negative, he seems to push his weight around by using his mouth, he's a bully.
Is he here tonight?
Yeah. He's the brightest guy in there. Over there in yellow.
Maybe he'll, maybe he'll have something to say too, I'd like to hear from him if he wants to be heard.
And you've heard the questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Terry Wingeter, and I just want to appreciate you all up there hearing every, everybody's concern. I've known Mr. Gerard and his former, his wife, his uh, for some time and I know what kind of people they are. And, um, I want to vouch for Mr. Gerard. And I suggest you, uh, table this. There's too many neighbors against this particular, uh, development right now. And, um, I think you need to get to the bottom of the problems here. So, that's all I have to say. I don't know much about this development, I just found out about it tonight, but I certainly suggest you get to the bottom of it and table it. So that's my idea, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, sir. Any further for opposition of MS twenty-four dash one?
Susan Klingman, sixteen hundred Sitting Bull. The subdivision would be right next to our property. They talked about the water, but they talked about the subdivision, what's it going to do to the people up the hill from them? That's my concern. That, and the way that kids these days don't have respect for other people's property and with us being right there, I have this fear of young kids coming up with their four-wheelers or dirt bikes and using everybody else's property to have their fun on. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you for coming up. Any further opposition? Anybody else wish to speak against MS twenty-four dash one? When you get up here, name and address if you would, sir.
My name's Greg Gerard, reside at four thousand Horse Ranch Creek Road. Just a couple of quick things, I, I think you guys have heard a lot of things this evening, you have a lot to ponder. Uh, we do stand in opposition of this sub-development. A couple of questions I do have. Uh, with regards to the water, the gentleman had talked about The gentleman had talked about. Being pretty definitive on water aquifers. We have, when you have a well drilled, you sure can't get that definitive answer of, well, we're gonna go this deep and hit you water. I, I'd like that taken into consideration. Uh, as far as the well testing, I, I don't believe any of our wells around there had been tested, he spoke about, I'm, I'm not sure which wells he'd had. Tested, but. Uh, the other portion that I'd like to just make sure is we, the, the information that you have that, that we had sent with our opposition, did each of you receive that? Okay. One other thing that someone was gonna speak about was the, that, that road that goes up to that tower. We've found an easement. To me, it looks like. The, the FAA will not allow you to close that road. That, I, and there's so much that we're throwing at you right now. We would ask that you please at least review all of this. Before making a decision tonight, because in all fairness. You know, John, John deserves a, to, to have his say as well. But, uh, I, I think tonight to, to approve this. Big project would, would be a bit premature. Uh, other than that, that's all I have for you gentlemen.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just, just a very quick clarification on the road dedications. Uh, both this subdivision and the BB Brooks subdivision, the roads are dedicated to the people of the subdivisions, the owners of the subdivision. And private maintenance. Just, uh, so literally. According to the dedication, one can't use the other, so. And, and that's why the FAA access easement would need to be rewritten to follow. One of those roads, and again, be exclusive to the FAA, so.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So what you're telling me is the document isn't appropriate for tonight? In other words, it needs to have his name put on it and some other changes made to the subdivision document?
The, what I'm seeing on the, on the document right now is a change of owner, yes, there was a change of owner on, uh, recorded on four eleven.
But it's not reflected here?
It's not reflected on what you're seeing.
So this, does that have to be taken care of?
It, it does before the final plat is, uh.
So, so would you agree that it's, it's not appropriate to, for us to make a decision tonight that we should table it and, um. And look into it more deeply and then have another meeting?
Uh, that's good, that's a loaded question, but thank you. It, it's not complete, yes, because of the change in, in, uh, in name. Um, it, that's minor, but, uh, I would, I would basically say that is your call, there's been a lot of new information.
Well, yeah, I know it's our call, I'm just asking you how you feel about it.
Yeah, I, I feel there's been a lot of new information, uh, presented this evening that was, uh, you know, later than. Normal review period that you, that you have.
Well, the purpose of, the purpose of these hearings is to be fair with everybody, all of our citizens. So if we don't have all the information, I, I'm, I'm thinking that, that a tabling would be a good idea. Now, if there, there's some reason people don't want things tabled, so I wondered if, if you felt that way.
To, to me, honestly, it makes. Yeah, yes, there's been new information, it's not a complete deal, so a table, tabling is certainly appropriate, yes.
Um, thank you very much.
Chairman, go ahead.
Come back up, I'm not, I got a question for you.
Yes, sorry.
One of the things that was brought up was that he would develop the roads and stuff as the lots were sold.
Right.
Now. That presents a major problem, because if you've got a reroute. Sitting Bull, so you have access to the VOR. Station, and that's what they wanna do, then those roads are gonna have to be developed prior to.
Prior to Sitting Bull?
Yes, they're gonna have to all be developed as far as I'm concerned, as far, before they do anything, from what I've heard tonight. And, uh. I'm sure Mr. Higler would be happy to give you what the county specs are. For what those roads have to be, if that's what he's saying he's gonna build them to, so. I would, you know, I have, I have issues with that, uh, because it, it. I know what those, what that soil type is out there, and I know how unstable it is. And if it's not built appropriately, then that would be a major problem, and that would eliminate the access to the VOR. And that would create other major issues, even if we have a legal easement, if the roads aren't developed correctly.
Yes.
That would create a very big problem for this county.
Yes.
And, uh, so that's something that I think also needs to be specifically addressed before we move forward with anything.
Yes, even though the VOR is a, uh, much more stable piece of equipment than it used to be. Yes, access needs to be absolutely maintained, and it needs to be good access.
Well, according to their easement, it said twenty-four hours a day.
Yes.
Every, every hour, every day, because, just because it's more stable. When it goes out, it's gotta be fixed right now, so.
Yep.
That's something that, that would definitely have to be addressed specifically.
Yes, yes, that, I, in my opinion, you would not be able to close that road at all until you can, uh. Make your access in another direction.
The access would have to be completed all the way around, and that would be, have, have to, that legal easement associated with it also.
I would agree, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions from staff, or for staff?
The issue with the electrical out there, have you, have you had anything to do with that?
No, I have not, sir. The, uh, my, my experience with that is, is if Rocky Mountain Power says that they'll. Serve the area, then they'll make provisions to, to serve it, whether it's, you know, more wire, more service.
Is there some document that says they've said that?
I have not seen it, no.
So we would need to have that information. People, yeah, I just don't like when people say, well, we've got, we can get this done, there's no document.
Can I get this back on?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else with opposition to MS twenty-four dash one? Name and address, good sir?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name's Logan Engelmann, I live at thirty-one fifty-one Broken Trail Drive. Sorry about that. Uh, I would just like to say something about. The power situation, which has just been brought up again. This may not be particularly relevant to what is going to happen here, but I have a friend who has. Several hundred acres out in Glen Rock. And. The county or the, uh, power company. Took portions of their land eminent domain. And ran power right through their property a hundred yards either side of power poles. I would hate to see anything like that happen to people's property out here, I don't know how, you know. How likely that is, but I just wanted to make you aware that that could be a possibility if something happens to the power. Or if they do need to bring more power up into the new subdivision.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition to MS twenty-four dash one? Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? All right. There being no one or others to speak for or against MS twenty-four dash one. Now declare the public hearing closed. Open discussion to commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Do I have a motion first? You, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, my, my motion is gonna be to send this back to staff and, and to planning and zoning. Um, and, and, but give me my reasons why. First of all, we've heard of a lack of power, or potential lack of power out there. The, the wells, I think somebody said you can't drill a well and really know, I mean. How deep you gotta go and what you're gonna get out of it until after you drill it anyways. Maybe there's a science to it, to where you can be able to say exactly what it's gonna produce and whatnot, but I do know for a fact. And I think Commissioner North will be able to back this up. Uh, Regional Water just put this area into their, their maps. And so if, in my opinion, if we're gonna have a subdivision this size. Put in out there, and you're gonna be servicing that many people, you need to look for a different water supply than just wells. And you got access to regional water now, so. I would like to see that looked into as far as, uh, whether they could tap into regional water and provide. At least water to each one of those lots. The only other thing that I would add is, under standards eight and nine, it says that they're met. From what I'm listening to here tonight, if in fact, Mr. Miller, and he, he has a right to come up and talk to us or not, but he did not. And, under standards eight and nine, uh, it says no financial guarantee is required. But everything I'm listening to tonight is that people are, are putting money out, not getting product finished. Or still owe money, and, uh, nothing, these are not getting completed or getting done. So what would make you think that there's, uh, financial backing to get this done? And to get it done all in one shot, because I agree again with Commissioner North that. Uh, this subdivision, these roads would need to be done all at one time in order to allow for that access, so. There's a lot of questions here, um, and I appreciate everybody that came up and talked tonight, because it. Gave a lot more questions that I think that this isn't a, a thing to table for us to have discussion over, this needs to go back to staff, and it needs to go back to planning and zoning. And the very questions that I'm asking here tonight, we need to get some answers to.
So, I have a motion. To remand this back to staff and planning and zoning board, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need discussion.
Further discussion.
Uh, do you want it? Yeah, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Further discussion on the motion to second, please go ahead. Commissioner North.
This is more of a question for Commissioner Frill. Uh, do you wanna list every, all those in there specifically, or do you just wanna remand it back to staff and let them look at everything? Uh, because if you wanna. Add those in specifically, which is exactly what I would do. Or recommend, then I would also recommend that we have. For staff's approval, that we have a specific. Road design approved as well as having the easements and everything else specifically approved. Prior to that coming back to staff.
So I would like it to be itemized and have those specific, specific questions that have been asked here tonight to be answered. So if it, if we wanna, uh. Change this motion that it goes back to staff and back to P and Z, that the answers need to be, is there adequate? Uh, power adequate, uh, is there an opportunity to, to, uh, tap into regional water? Are the roads gonna be constructed, uh, immediately, and will it be constructed to county standards? Is, uh, there, can this be financially backed by this individual? Is he gonna get halfway in this project and stop, or is this project gonna get done? If I'm missing one, let me know.
That's the one I, uh, seconded, exactly how you just said it, that's what I intended it with my second.
I, I just wanted it to be clear.
So, is that a friendly amendment to?
It is.
Okay, and, and you're willing to accept that?
Absolutely.
All right, further discussion. Hearing none, now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please same sign. Hearing none, motion passed. This will be remanded back to the P and Z and staff for evaluation per the friendly amendment. All right. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of MS twenty-four dash five. Burton Olley number one subdivision, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules, and. Metro County Commission and other applicable laws. May we have a report from staff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, this one's a little simpler. The applicant, RB Trust, through its owner, Richard F. Burton Olley, trustee, requests, uh, approval of vacation of replat of lot thirty-eight in the Swingle Ranch tracks. To create the Burton Olley number one subdivision, a major subdivision consisting of two lots on a parcel of approximately. Four point seven seven acres in the suburban residential zoning district. Uh, the property is located at, uh, forty-one eighty Squaw Creek Road, seven point three, or point seven three miles south of highway two twenty. The planning commission heard the case on May fourteenth twenty-four and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the Burton Olley number one subdivision. One spoke, in the, the planning commission meeting of five fourteen, one spoke in favor of the case and zero spoke against. The staff did send notices to surrounding neighbors, uh, and received no written comments. Planning considerations, uh, the staff has reviewed the following comments, road and bridge had no comment on this plat, Metro County Health Department. Approved with no comment on plat, uh, Metro County Conservation District had no comment. The fire district had no comments on the plat, uh, Metro County GIS received and accepted the plat after revisions. Uh, the Metro County Assessor, uh, mapping reviewed and accepted the plat after revisions. And the Toronto County Survey reviewed and accepted the plat after revisions. Uh, twenty thirteen major subdivision regulations, major subdivision definition, a division of land of two or more parcels. Of a hundred and forty acres or less and not classified as a simple subdivision. The reason this doesn't classify as a simple subdivision is because it's previously plotted. Chapter four, section five, criteria for approval again, uh. The subdivision is consistent with the Toronto County Development Plan and the Toronto County Zoning Resolution, we feel the standard is met. Uh, proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision lot areas are in compliance with the twenty twenty-two zoning resolution, the zoning. Is suburban residential or SR one, and has a two acre minimum lot size. All lots of the proposed subdivision are over the minimum requirement. The intent and purpose of the suburban residential, uh, is to establish and protect areas for low density residential and accessory. Agricultural source, uh, uses, and that's out of, uh, the zoning, twenty twenty-two zoning resolution, section two point oh six, point oh three. The subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions, chapter one, and subdivision design standards, chapter seven. That standard is met, the proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions and subdivision design standards of the twenty thirteen Metro County subdivision regulations. Uh, criteria three, the applicant has provided evidence that sufficient wat, water supply system will be acquired in terms of. Uh, quantity, quality, and dependability for the type of subdivision proposed, and is determined. In accordance with the standards set forth in the Water Supply Systems Appendix P. This standard is met, uh, the proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision will be served by existing onsite water wells. Uh, city water is located at the property line on this one. Uh, criteria four, the applicant has, uh, provided evidence that public sewage disposal system will be established, and if other methods of sewage disposal are proposed. Evidence that the system complies with the state local laws and regulations, appendix O. This standard is met, the proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision will not have a centralized sewage system. Which is stated, and this is stated on the plat, each lot will be served by an existing individual onsite sewage system permitted by DEQ. Uh, the applicant has, uh, provided evidence to show all areas of the proposed subdivision. Uh, which may involve soil or topographical conditions representing hazards or required special precautions. Have been identified by the applicant and proposed uses of the areas are compatible with such conditions, that's criteria five. The standard is met, uh, the Metro County Conservation District had no comment on this. This plat. Uh, criteria number six, necessary services including fire, police protection, schools, recreation utilities, open space and transportation systems. Are available to serve the proposed subdivision. This standard is met, uh, the proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision is within the Metro County Sheriff's jurisdiction. And requires no new services. Criteria seven, subdivision appears to be compatible with surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area, not detrimental to the health, safety. Or welfare of the inhabitants of the area, the county. This standard is met. Uh, proposed Burton Olley number one subdivision use, uses will remain suburban residential. And there is no detriment to health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area, the county. Uh, criteria eight, nine, ISD and finances documentation satisfactory to the Board of Commissioners. That the improvement and service district requirements have been met, uh, documentation that the subdivider has. Documentation that the subdivider has adequate financial resources to develop and complete water and/or sewage systems, or any facility proposed, or represented to be the responsibility of the subdivider, but not limited to the above-mentioned. Standards eight and nine are met, there are no improvements to be made. The required services are already in place, no finance guarantee is required. There are a few exhibits for this one here. First is the, is the original, yeah, plat marked preliminary, well, let's see here, yes, the preliminary plat. And kind of, it describes the boundary of the area. This was previously one large lot, one larger lot and one smaller lot. That smaller lot did not meet the two-acre minimum in the Toronto County. And that is why you see a jog in that that actually encompasses the driveway of the northernmost lot. And that driveway then is access, that house is accessed via an easement. The, is this, you go back one, to the, first, yeah, that's the one? Thank you. This is, this is the original configuration, with one small lot and one larger lot. One, one good lot, one non-performing lot, and the purpose of this is to bring both lots into performance, so. The, and as I said, the third deal there, that jog exists to make the southern lot come to the two-inch minimum, and, or two-inch minimum, two-acre minimum. And that driveway then is accessed for the northern lot through, via an easement. The final, the final exhibit there is just a picture of the area, and that. I guess in summary, on this plat, we recommend you pass motion from the board, and let's take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I just have one. Mr. Gus is on the picture prior to this.
Yes.
So where will the new access be for the house? Because I'm seeing both of those driveways are on the one lot itself.
There will be no new access. There will be access by existing, this house here will be accessed through that driveway, this is where the easement exists.
Okay.
Like I said, the sole purpose for the easement is to have both lots to, to.
Okay, okay.
Any further questions? Sir, the, the lines is drawn, the, that'll put, all the setbacks will be appropriate and whatnot from the house?
They are still in conformance, yes. SR1, yes. That's kind of how they were set, that's why they're crooked too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Alrighty. This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of MS 24-5 to approach the lectern. I'd ask anybody in favor to approach the lectern. I'd ask anybody in favor to approach the lectern. And at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of MS 24-5 to approach the lectern. Those opposed, please approach the lectern. Any individuals who wish to speak in opposition of MS 24-5, approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against MS 24-5, I now declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve MS 24-5 with all the staff's facts and findings associated with this.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are discussions, holy cow. Okay, let's have a discussion. Any discussion? And there's no discussion, so.
You're a little, you're a little rusty, Mr. Commissioner.
I am very rusty on this part. Now that we've had our discussion and everything, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passed. Yeah, there's still three of us. All right. We will be moving into our public comments period.
Mr. Chairman, could we have our head of our road and bridge go first?
I was going to.
I figured you were, but I don't want to think I always read your mind.
You can't.
Okay.
I can't half the time. All right, we're going to be moving into the public comments section. We're going to have a brief discussion with Road and Bridge Director Mike Hegler first, concerning some concerns about county roads, or public education, basically.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Do you have specifics?
Yeah, I specifically wanted you to be here and speak to Coates Road, and the issue of what kind of traffic it can hold, and the various problems that, if any, that could occur if a mining operation should occur there.
Well, a little history on Coates Road. It's been in existence for some time. It wasn't upgraded, I came to work for the county in '03. We did do a project up there, an engineering project, that was bid out. We upgraded the road to county standards, put ditches in, put culverts into all the properties, and basically was designed for a residential-type application for the area. The, the use at the time was residential, and there's some agricultural use up in there on the state lands, has been cattle run up in there and whatnot. And, of course, we maintain it, we plow it. And then, after we had that project done, we also had another project on top of that, that we added some roadomil that was taken up out there on Highway 220 and was given to us. We blended that into the road. So the road, you know, it's had some improvements, none of which, you know, warrant a mining operation to haul in and out, you know. We, we also shared an expense with the city, some of the residents on the immediate approach off of CY, and we paved that section. And the reason, I think this is what they did, didn't it?
No.
Okay. The reason we did that was because of the dust issue. And the residents had a very good complaint about that. And the further up you go, the homes get a little further apart. But we also gave the opportunity to residents further up in there to share that cost, and at that time, they didn't want to do that. So, the road didn't get paved all the way up in there. So, the concerns we have as the county, and that I have, is, you know, if it becomes a heavy haul road, it's not constructed to take the traffic over time. And that all depends on what the traffic is, and how long it goes up and down the road every day. There's a lot of factors, but particularly in the winter, it's going to be an issue to move snow and to have any kind of traffic moving, and the people that live out there can attest to that. That road can become, you know, severely impacted with snow. And we don't always get there, you know, right away. Depends on the conditions, but anything, anything that would, you know, increase the traffic, particularly the heavy loading, would have to be taken into consideration for improvements on the road. The other factor that's a big one is, we don't have any turning lanes coming out of that road onto the state highway. And there's two signals, when you get onto the state highway, one is at Robertson Road, and the other one's back there at Paradise Drive. The spacing in there is critical with whiteout, and I've spoken to them, I'm not going to speak for them, but, you know, they are concerned about that issue. Could another light go in? You know, they, they aren't fond of that because of the spacing. And when you're released out of the light at Robertson Road, you're on an uphill grade, so every truck that stops there that's currently hauling, say, from Knife Rivers Pit, clear out there at Alcoa, or just general truck traffic, has to climb that hill and is accelerating all the way up to the top. And when they cross Coates Road, you know, it's the last thing they want to do is stop again, especially in the winter. And traffic coming out of there now, even for our plow trucks, is marginal. I mean, we, we have difficult time getting across there because you can't sit in the median. You're going to get knocked out of there by a car. And so, you know, you can picture a semi-truck with a trailer behind, double trailers even, or just a single, with a difficult turn out of there. The only, the only turn you can really make reasonably is in towards Casper, and there's no acceleration lane on the whiteout side. So that would all have to be addressed. We would have to address some kind of stacking lane to stack that traffic coming out to wait to get on to CY. It's not an ideal situation. So, you know, there's, those are the factors, you know, the road has been improved, it's still dusty at times. We shoot mag chloride on it once a year. That really works well going into winter, and it holds the road together. But, you know, it all depends on the moisture levels that we get, snow, rain, how the road falls apart, and it does fall apart. But just from the regular vehicular traffic.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
So, there's houses along Coates Road, isn't there?
Yes.
Are they within 300 feet of the road, the front doors of some of those houses?
Some of them are closer than that, yes.
Because I, one of the issues I had, when I got to thinking about this, was mining operations have to be at least 300 feet away from houses. So what I'm wondering is if these trucks, which are part of the mining operations, could even come down that road, if they're going by fully loaded 130,000-pound loads, they would be within, they would be outside the scope of the 300 feet. They would be closer into the houses. And I don't know whether that's an issue or not. Do you have any knowledge about that?
Well, part of a mining permit, and I am familiar with this, is the road that you haul on is also part of that mining application. And so you have to meet certain requirements with the state. And, you know, and I'm sure the county can, and put some stipulation on that at that time. But it's definitely, you know, it's only one way in, one way out. So here's another situation, if, if there is a congestion of some kind, some of those people are going to be trapped in there. You know, if you wreck a truck or roll one, there may be major delays in getting emergency vehicles up in there or whatnot. Does that happen every day? No, but it could.
So are you saying that that kind of an operation could cause danger and damage to the residents?
Considerable.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mike. Really appreciate giving us that little brief. All right, we're going to continue with the public comments for the evening. I see a lot of familiar faces. I would ask with how long this has taken so far tonight, if you have not spoken before, we'd love to hear from you. If you've spoken before, but don't have any new information, eh? You know, can we, can we kind of go past tonight? But if you've got more new information, or if you haven't spoken, hey, we'd love to hear from you. Sir, you're, you're chomping at the bit, why don't you come on up and tell us what you want to talk about?
Thank you. So, just so I address the commission properly, is it Mr. Acting Chair?
Just Vice Chair, we need your name and address as well.
My name is Bruce Lawson. I live at 4515. Forty-five.
It doesn't bend a whole lot, you just talk.
Oh, 4515 South Skyline Road. I live just due west of Coates Road. My property is situated 900 feet from Coates Road, although I am not in line of sight of Coates Road. I'm a lifelong Casper, Wyoming native and resident. The only time I've left was to attend the University of Wyoming, where I earned a bachelor's degree in range management in 1979, with my intent of working in the mining industry to conduct mine land reclamation. I worked in the uranium mining industry for six years, and in 1985, I went to work for Black Hills Bent Night, Mr. Tom Thorson, and I worked there for 35 years. I consider myself an expert in developing permitting, mining operations, non-coal surface mining operations. I permitted large mine, mines throughout Wyoming in seven counties. When I retired from Black Hills Bent Night in 2019, I was responsible for 85,000 acres of permitted mined land in seven counties throughout Wyoming. I know you guys have been wanting some expert testimony, so I'm your expert. And I have not had the opportunity to testify before. I am opposed, I've talked to every one of you on the phone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to visit with you about Prism's proposed project. Like I say, throughout my 35 career, or years at Black Hills Bent Night, my primary responsibilities for Tom Thorson were developing large-scale mining operations. Generally, my permit areas were hundreds, if not a thousand acres in size, with hundreds of acres of surface mining disturbances throughout Wyoming. And I permitted LMOs, small mine permits, large mine permits, and mainly, and large mine amendment areas. I am an expert in developing and reclaiming mining operations. Nobody knows it better than I do when it comes to non-coals. So, what I wanted to talk to you tonight, and if you would excuse me, some of my past experience in testifying before legislative committees, I got reprimanded for asking the committee members a question. Am I allowed to ask a question of you?
This is generally public comment.
Okay, thank you.
It isn't usually a question-answer, we may have questions for you later, but.
Thank you. So, one thing I, you know, that you may or may not know about the LMO is that, under the Environmental Quality Act of 1973, under the land quality rules and regulations, LMOs are exempted from any baseline environmental analysis, any, of any kind. And in addition, there's no requirement for a detailed mining and reclamation plan, and there's no requirement for an in-depth analysis of public hazard and public nuisances. So, so one thing, as far as I know, and since I can't ask a question of you, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that Kyle Tru has ever presented to the commissioners a detailed mine plan or reclamation plan, under the TEQ regulations, he's not required to. But I wanted to talk to you tonight, and it kind of follows up to Commissioner, the Commissioner's question with the Road and Bridge Department Manager, who I know well through my career working for Black Hills Bent Night. You know, I put together some numbers of the number of trucks that are going to come down Coates Road if he mines his 15 acres as he's proposed. So under his LMO application that I got from DEQ, what he had proposed to mine the 15 acres in Section Two, he had proposed to mine to a depth of 25 feet. So sand and gravel's a little different than bent night. You know, bent night, you might remove 35 feet of shale to get three feet of bent night. But with sand and gravel, everything you mine at 25 feet, as he proposed, you're going to haul it away. Everything's product. And, and, you know, nothing goes back into the pit, so it's going to end up with a big hole in the ground. That's kind of where he's talked about having a 60-acre pond, and he's right, because he doesn't have anything to backfill the hole with, he's going to haul it all the way. So I just wanted to present to the commission tonight some numbers I put together. You know, one thing, when I went to work for Black Hills Bent Night, I immediately became a mining engineer, because I had to calculate annually all of the reclamation costs on all of our mining operations. So I had to calculate all the backfill volumes required to backfill all our pits, all the in-place overburden, all the in-place top swell volumes, seeding costs, topsoil replacement. seeding costs, topsoil replacement costs, grading, contouring. So I essentially became a mining engineer. And, uh, and I know calculating volumes of overburden extremely well. So let's, let, let me just kind of run you through kind of a rough estimate of uh what we're looking at in, in how much gravel Kyle will produce on 15 acres and how many trucks will come down Coach Road. So there's 43,560 square feet in an acre. So there's forty, 43,560 cubic feet in one acre. And there's, he, his LMO mining area is 15 acres and he's going to mine to a depth of 25 feet. So that calculates out to 605,000 bank cubic yards. And I, I won't get into the details of loose cubic yards versus bank cubic yards. But uh we'll just, we'll just sort of deal with bank cubic yards. And that's, that's what's in place, you know? Once you disturb uh, uh, any uh overburden, it, it, there's a swell factor. Cause you know, you start with compacted overburden or sand and gravel. And once you disturb it, it, you know, you create voids and it swells. So there's a swell factor. So there's a swell factor in some standard engineering tables for sand and gravel of, of 1.12, which equates to actually 677,600 cubic yards is what he would produce on his 15 acres if he mined it to 25 feet deep. So in order to haul 677,600 loose cubic yards in 25 ton belly dump trucks, and I assume that's what he'll use. I've been watching the, all the trucks coming out of the McMurray pit on the south of the Casper Country Club. And those, they're, none of those trucks are pulling tops. So if you were pulling a top, that'd be a 35 ton load. So anyhow, I calculated that out to be 27,104 truckloads. But that's one way. So you got to double that round trip. So to haul what he will produce off of 15 acres, mining to 25 feet deep, there'll be 54,208 trucks on Coach Road. Let me, let me say that again. 54,208 25 ton belly dump trucks round trip to remove what he will produce off his 15 acres if he mines to 25 feet deep. So what Mr. Hagler just told you about the condition of Coach Road, will it handle 54,000 trucks, Mr. Hagler? No, it won't. Uh, so in addition to that.
Sir. You're throwing a lot of numbers at us and it's really good information. Your time's kind of come and gone, but I am really interested in what you have to say, what you're presenting. It, it's fascinating to me. I, I like numbers myself. Is there any way you can put what you're giving us into an email and send to us or to, to me? And I can.
Sure, sure. Can I, can I just add a couple of other things?
Yeah.
Okay, so I went on to calculate, you know, the 52 weeks in a year, five days a week. Say that you haul five days a week. You cut that down to 250 days with holidays. Uh, uh, so 54,208 round trip, truck trips to remove 677,000 cubic yards would equate to 216 trucks per day in a 250 day year. Thank you for your time.
Sir, hold on for just a second. Questions?
I do, I have a question. So now we're just talking about 15 acres, but he's got eight leases up there. So if they keep expanding them, is this a project that takes 20, 30, 40 years?
Well, yes, it is. He's already made it clear in some of his, actually that letter that he sent to the commission. He talked about a 60 acre pond. Well, he's only allowed one 15 acre LMO. So he's already admitted his next step is he's going to take that to a large mining operation. So there's no limit on the permit area size on a large mining operation. And there's no limit on the amount of land you can mine under a large mine. He's made it clear that's what he's going to do. When he started talking about a 60 acre pond, how do you develop a 60 acre pond in a 15 acre LMO?
It's a pretty interesting number, isn't it? I, I wondered about the pond and the soccer field, but that's another area of time. So have you been involved, uh, where you have helped people get conditional use permits from county commissioners for mining operations?
Well, in the 35 years I permitted mines for Black Hills Bent Night, I never had any opposition to any mine permit that I, uh, and I permitted thousands of acres in seven counties. We always were required to contact the county commission uh in, in the permitting process. And we never had any problems because most of our mines were very remote. They were never near any uh housing or subdivision. Commissioner Laird, for example, one LMR, I permitted 15 miles southwest of Casey on the 3T Ranch. The nearest home was the 3T Ranch headquarters, which was six miles away. It's the perfect place for an LMO. This isn't.
So what, what's going to happen possibly to houses that are within 50 to 100 feet of Coach Road if that number of trucks is coming down there every day?
Uh, Kyle Tru is going to destroy these people's lives like my good friend Walter Shaw right here. It'll be right in front of his house. It'll ruin, it'll ruin the lives of those people. And you've been up and down Coach Road. Some of those people's homes are what, 40 feet from Coach Road? You know?
It's close there. I know there's a bunch that are closer to 300 feet. I just don't know what the legal issue is. If, if the trucking, the trucking is part of the mining operation, if it's been defined legally, that's one of the issues I'd like our county attorney to kind of take a look into because that, that would speak quite loudly in, you know, for what we might end up doing here. But I really appreciate you coming and you, we do have the five minutes for a reason.
Right.
And I always tell the chairman, I got to go get a burrito sometime.
Hey, well, I'm going, I'm going, I'll be back with more information. Also put this in a, a letter and, and send some numbers to you. So you have some idea of the volume and material and a number of trucks that are going to come down. And I'm just real disappointed that Kyle Tru hasn't provided that information already as long as we've been dealing with this issue. And I, one, one last thing I want to add. Uh, Commissioner Laird went to University of Law, Wyoming Law School with my sister. And he nicknamed Leslie Law School. And I just hope that after tonight, I don't walk away with some moniker from Commissioner Laird like he applied to my sister Leslie Lawson. It was famously known now as Leslie Law School.
We'll try to contain him.
She's a, she's a lovely lady. And when I was 17, we went to the Rialto one night. So she's a very nice woman.
I'm going to ask her about that.
Thank you, sir.
Rose Marion Saban, Natrona County resident. On March 5th, 2024, at 1:26:05 at the commissioner meeting, a question regarding conflicts of interest was asked of Mr. Nicolason and Mr. Laird. The question was limited to the past six months. At 1:27:20, Mr. Nicolason responded that he has no conflicts, legal or perceived. Prior to the zoning resolution rewrite, when former Commissioner Mr. Henry was campaigning, he asked for a vote of the people for two additional years in office to oversee the plan to its final completion. Why then was it imperative that the zoning rewrite be illegally adopted December 20th, 2022? What conflicts of interest were there at that time? The rewrite was done by Logan Simpson, a Colorado firm, and cost 150,000 to the taxpayers. Were our commissioners incapable of writing this with the help of local solicitation? The time and urgency of the resolution to be passed illegally, when combined with the application for the state leases for the proposed gravel mine, for me is highly questionable. Pair that with a number of other facts, like the many provisions that were removed from the previous 2000 land use plan. Chapter one, general provisions, section two, goals and policies. Again, these provisions were removed and essentially combined with conditional use criteria for approval, which has proven to be biased. A, assure the future development will not adversely affect adjacent land use. B, protect the property rights of the individual to the degree that they do not infringe upon the property rights of others. C, accommodate the desires of neighboring landowners and the views of the general public while at the same time protecting the rights of the individual property owners. H, prevent the mixing of incapable land uses by providing transitional buffer zones. N, prevent degradation of the air quality of Natrona County. O, preserve natural vegetation where its removal would cause slope failure, soil erosion, destruction of wildlife habitat, or significant visual damage. P, preserve, preserve areas of scenic and wildlife value. R, preserve and protect Casper Mountain and North Platte River. These are but a few of the provisions removed from the document that was comprehensible and required no permit to increase revenue or pick and choose who has more money and connection. Provisions that I recited numerous times publicly at these meetings and questioned their removal. Provisions that invoked a response from Chairman, the chairman, that he feels there are some who continue to stoke the fires out of ignorance and greed. If this commission truly served the people, the current document would have been rescinded to make mining non-permissible. Thusly, that would have placed all authority on the state to challenge local policies for the county interests. Those in opposition to this mine proposal would have had a single entity to challenge. The deflection and gaslighting they are being subjected to and self-serving interests would not be questionable. Mr. Nord and, Mr. North and Mr. Laird made attempts to revise the document with a strong lack of willingness and much opposition to do so by the other three members of this commission. This certainly should warrant a question and demand an answer as to why. Why also at the Liberties Place For You Town Hall with Mr. Tru was cobalt and copper mentioned as other project products extracted during mining operations? Was this a tell? If rare earth minerals are found, this mine would be at the very least a multimillion dollar operation. Mr. Tru's comments to me in a discussion afterward about the high intelligence of Mr. Nicolason overheard by witnesses could also raise some question as it did seem to come out of the blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Name and address, please.
My name's LeAnn Cadwell. I live at 3924 West Opel in Evansville, Natrona County. Um, my husband's coming up here to talk with us. His name's Calvin Cadwell. Um, we are changing gears a little bit for you guys. We have a neighbor who has been excessively shooting up our neighborhood. And it's unsafe for my children to be outside and play. And we are at the point that every time we call the sheriff's office, they're told there's nothing they can do. Um, the person that's doing the shooting has left bullet holes in multiple neighbors' housing. I have evidence, pictures right here for you guys, if you want me to hand those out. Um, we had a phone call from a sheriff this afternoon who's investigating it, who said there's absolutely nothing he can do.
He said they can recommend safety recommendations, but there's no, there's no enforcement they can do to keep him from shooting until someone of importance is hurt.
So.
Been told that multiple times.
Yeah. We are within 300 feet. I haven't actually had the opportunity to measure, but we're extremely close to the person's house that's shooting.
The neighbors have.
The neighbors have a propane.
Recovered, they've recovered bullets from his gun in their house, so.
Wait, yeah. So I don't know if you guys are interested in seeing these. Am I allowed to step around and hand them out? Okay.
Give one of those sets to the clerk, please.
All right, so the first picture is a real estate sign across from their house. Um, you can clearly see where he's one shot at the signs, but you can also see the ricochets and they all push in the same direction. The next one is a letter from the neighbors who have recovered the bullets. Um, they were unable to be here tonight because they had to work. The next one or three are the same bullet that they pulled out of their wall. When they called the sheriff, they were told that there was nothing that could be done. And then the rest are multiple bullet, um, holes in their house. What really terrifies me is this house is past my house between the shooter and the house that's getting hit. I have five boys, all 19 and under, who are terrified to be outside because he's shooting all day, all night.
Yep, he shoots after dark.
After dark. No respect to noise ordinances or anything like that. My children play with their kids and have brought home bullet shells, um, including a 308 and a 30 hot six, which are all high powered rifles. Or high powered ammunition guns, not rifles, 308s.
He doesn't stop shooting when people drive down the road. He's more than 30 feet from the road. He can walk down the road or.
We can't go.
Shooting right beside you. To hit that house, he, his, his gun is crossing the road. That road is across, or that house is across the street from, from where he's.
I have conversations on my phone from other neighbors who have said that they have stopped and confronted him about it being unsafe. And he's told them to go to hell or get off the property. Um, and it's to the point that something needs to be done before somebody gets killed. We're not safe and I'm not the only one that says that. There's a propane tank less than 200 feet from where he's shooting in the neighbor's house. He shoots solid steel ammunition at metal targets, which causes the ricochet. My husband's been outside multiple times trying to work on vehicles in the driveway with ricochet bullets going over his head. The sheriffs have been called up to five times that I know of on the situation, only two of which have been from our house. And, um, the last time I called was when we emailed the county commissioners, the sheriffs, the county attorneys. And when we emailed, he was, we can clearly see, you know, their house from our house. And he was outside drinking, riding four wheelers, shooting guns with no, with an arrogance almost when you confront him, there's almost like an arrogance that nothing can be done, so he can do whatever he wants. Which we are all for the rights, gun rights and everything like that. But the problem is when what you're doing on your property affects those around you. So that's what we have to bring up today.
Any questions?
Did, did you personally talk to the sheriff's deputy?
No, um, I called 911 on Sunday night. The sheriff's officers that went out there drove around, parked out in front of their house, never saw them get out and talk to him.
Yeah, they, they never gave us the opportunity to file.
They never, they never come talk to us either.
Well, we, we have a really good sheriff's department. So I'll personally ask the sheriff myself about this. Uh, I, I do understand that people can shoot their firearms outside of the city limits. Uh, is this outside the city limits?
We're on.
So they would be able to legally shoot their firearms now? I don't think it's legal to shoot it at other people's houses though.
Exactly. And that's the problem. There's, there's a difference between safely shooting and unsafely shooting. And unfortunately, it's people like this that give gun owners a bad name.
These two commissioners are ex-law enforcement personnel. They probably know a lot more about it than I do.
No, I'm a layman.
You were, you were a deputy sheriff. You were a deputy sheriff and there's a captain of the police department and a former deputy sheriff. So maybe they have something to say.
Commissioner Frill.
Actually, I do have a question for you. So I talked to the owner of the real estate company, called me the other day and explained to me what was going on out there. One question I. One question I did not ask him because I didn't realize that his sign had been damaged. Is there anybody out there that witnesses take place? Or the damage to the sign itself? Because that's really what it boils down to is being able to have somebody say, "I saw subject A shoot from this location and hit this item."
Okay.
I guess that's the problem, right? I mean,
Yeah.
when he's shooting, we're not watching.
We're hiding.
Yeah, yeah. No, I totally agree and totally get it. I'm, I'm looking.
Now, buddy, the person that, um, has the letter in here, the one that recovered the bullet, said he was standing outside, heard the gunshot from over there, felt the ricochet go past him and hit his house. Unfortunately, he had to work tonight and couldn't make it. But, um, his phone number is on there. If you guys want to reach out to him and ask him any questions, he said he'd be more than happy to help with any information.
Do you know if he reached out to the sheriff at all?
He said he did and that they were told there was nothing that could be done. And what's, what I heard earlier, you know, is you said you had, knew somebody that could match a bullet to a gun. Right? He has a bullet. There are guns down there.
So I did speak to investigator Ken Jividen this, this afternoon. He does have a case open, but he said there is no enforcement mechanism. They can offer suggestions on how they can do this safely, but they can't tell him, "We can't do it." They can't tell him or enforce him to actually make the changes. I mean, the rest of us just live in fear, I guess. Unfortunately, we need laws to protect us from.
Well, I, I don't think that there, it's legal to shoot somebody's property. Now, it's proving it is the next thing.
When we call and they're actually doing it? The last time on that Saturday, people ran from the deputy when he pulled up and he didn't even, they didn't do anything.
You got a cell phone?
Yep.
Can I record video?
We can.
I have, I have videos on my phone of him shooting past dark. But nothing within.
Talk to the sheriff and present the videos.
There's nothing that says he can't shoot past dark. Even though it's a sound.
What?
There's nothing that says he can't shoot past dark either.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but if, if you're seeing him shoot
Yeah.
and there's property damage.
Yeah.
You know, that, that video recording helps a lot.
When we talked to the sheriff, when I called 911 and talked to the dispatch the other night, she could actively hear him shooting and made a comment about it when we were on the phone. She told me.
The thing is, is he needs to be shooting safe, right?
Yeah, and he.
And so, and not shooting other people's property. Once he starts not shooting safe or shooting, destroying other property, that's where the, uh, violation of statutes occur.
Right.
And so that's what you need to focus on, not, not that he's shooting because it's illegal. Not that he's shooting at past sunset because it's legal.
Right.
Doing that isn't legal and try to capture that.
Right.
Well, you're still gonna get the sheriff out there to do something.
Yeah. And obviously you can see I have pretty important things to be worried about out there.
So I guess, just let me add some in there. By no means are we asking to put yourself in harms way in order to gather evidence, but you also need to understand that unless somebody, unless you have a way of, of showing that this person is responsible for the damage that takes place, and I'm sure the attorney at the other end of the table would agree, it's very difficult for a case to be proven against somebody or for the sheriff even file charges against anybody unless you have a way of saying that this individual shot this gun at this location. Now, you do have bullets, so if you have not had a conversation with the sheriff or if nobody themselves have gone down to the sheriff's office, I would suggest you do that. You go down there with the exact same stuff you're giving us. If you have the bullets, take them with you and say, "Look, this is taking place out here. Here's damage that was taken place. This bullet was recovered outside of a, outside of a trailer house and make him aware of what's going on so that he can look into it a lot deeper than what we can. We're not, we don't run his department."
Right.
He, he's an elected official just like we are. But until somebody goes and does that, calling the dispatcher is not going to get it done. Watching sheriffs drive around the neighborhood and not get out of a vehicle is not going to get it done. You, if,
Right.
if you want to get something done, you need to go down and just file a formal complaint or just ask to talk to somebody down there.
Speaking to Ken this afternoon, his, his comment was his hands are tied because of you guys. Be- because of you guys, that you guys don't have a statute to give them authority to do anything about it.
I just told you, property damage.
Yeah, property damage.
I can tell you right now, Michael, how can go down there and file a complaint himself. Now, now there needs to be some evidence to show that he did this, but to say that their hands, hands are tied, I, I would take it a level above Mr. Jividen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
You're gonna take both? Come here, Buggy.
Somebody needs to go to bed.
Not talking about Dallas.
Yeah, we're not talking about Dallas. All right. Further public comment? Name and address, please, sir.
John Miller, 1270 Moccasen Trail. We're not going to talk about water here. We're going to go back to my subdivision. I didn't come up and speak before because I didn't want to make a scene. Okay? Let's start with the first guy that talked about the opposition, Anthony Engelmann. Okay, we started on his house, ran out of money. Okay? Um, he tried to get my license suspended. I think I went before you guys. Okay? He came in with some flimsy excuse. I came in with two and a half inches of paperwork showing from the very first email to the time where he emailed me, "You're fired." Okay? So that's the last I've heard of it. Um, the county didn't find any merit. They gave me back, you know, they unsuspended my license. I've done probably 15 homes. Okay, let's go to Matt Hewitt, the next one. Yeah, his place is on Ormsby Road. It's all green. What's the problem there? Well, when you stop paying, you stop work. We filed a lien. Now, if the lien wasn't valid, don't you think the bank would have said, "Hey, take this lien off?" No, Flat Valley and Bow. "No, I have a valid lien." He hired an attorney. He's the problem, not me. He doesn't want to, he, he wants the world and doesn't have any money. So like he said, he still owes me $100,000. But they only tell you part of it. You know? We dealt with power. Dave Schaefer at the power company, they're going to bring power in. They don't have an issue. There's no problems. You know, there's no safety concerns, which I don't know what this other guy's talking about. Oh, there's safety concerns. You know, we didn't think we needed to bring in Dave Schaefer from the power company. The people from, um, that we dealt with at road and bridge, the people we dealt with at the state. Um, the state started giving me two permits to, um, cut their fence and bring access in. We didn't have a problem with the FAA. The, uh, let me tell you what the problem with these people are. They want to cut through there. You know, when BB Brooks came in and everybody knows this, they just came in and plowed these roads in. You want to talk about crappy roads? Go drive over in that neighborhood now. The, um, I mean, they're just, they're horrible. And then somebody got up and said, "Well, he fixed a little piece." Sure. BB Brooks had a big mud puddle. They asked me to fix it. I said, "Well, okay." The long and short of the story is, they said, "Here, we'll give you 6,000 bucks. That's it. That's all we can afford." That wasn't enough to fix a quarter mile. And I said, "Well, I need about 12 loads to grab." No, you get, you get four. That's it. You know, so when your hands are tied, you can only do so much. Misappropriation? Yes, I've had problems with Roy and Greg. And in the heat of the moment when he's telling me he's going to kill my dogs. Anywhere you find me, you find my girls. The, uh, on any of my jobs. My, my girls go with me everywhere. And he starts telling me, you know, "I'm going to kill your dogs. Don't, don't do that." But, you know, we've since talked, um, Greg and I, and it was like, "Okay, you're mad, I'm mad." Boom. But I don't see any reason why you actually should have denied this. Because we spent a lot of time with planning and zoning and the commission, well, not the commissioners, um, you know, with everybody in the county, like, it was addressed even the size of the lot. Okay, we weren't coming saying we want to put 20 in and then next year, well, we, hey, we can, we can cut this lot in half, we can cut this lot in half, we can cut this lot. So 20 now becomes 30. No, the way we set it up was to, to do it a certain way and that's the way. And the same thing with the roads. It was going to be done in three phases. The first phase was the road coming in to the cul-de-sac. We'd build that piece of road, which is a little less than a half mile, build five houses, generate income, then we'd cut across. Do some of that and then we'd finish. You know, who do you know right now besides maybe McMurray, True, whatever, that has the money to build two miles of road just out of their pocket? You know, we were doing it phases. Same thing with power. Everybody, you know, everybody's on, and I don't know what these people are talking about, oh, I'm on cash. I, I'm the third largest spender at Home Depot right now. You know, so it's, it's, you know, I can call almost anybody. Knife River, talk to Mike Fusion, get concrete, get gravel. And at this point, the, um, three have been working with me. Where other people will say, "Pay 18 bucks a ton," I pay 14. You know, so everybody was working to make this and now we kicked it back and regardless of how long. I mean, I'm the one who spent a half million dollars on the property. You know, we're going to spend 175,000 on, you know, power.
Mr. Miller?
Yep.
With time and whatnot, um, this is information I would have loved to have heard during your, uh, during that hearing for the subdivision. I really wish you would have came up and spoken in favor of it, given us this information and whatnot. We did not fully deny this. We didn't say, "No, you can't do this. We can't, you can't do this in the future." We just reset it. We sent it back down to, uh, the planning and zoning. Give them this information as well.
They have it all.
It wasn't presented to us and he had some questions as well. So once we get that information, we can reevaluate and move forward, but nobody's saying, permanently denying this. We're not saying you can't.
So you're telling us we have to go back through a planning and zoning meeting?
Yes.
For approval?
Yes.
See, now after talking to the FAA, what they said was like, "Right now, okay, I own the property." All right, these people want to cut through. Well, if you look at the original subdivision maps for BB Brooks, they came down Sitting Bull, went across Seven Buttes and out Desperado. That just happens to be convenient for them to cut through. What there's, if, everybody wanted a second access, the, um, you know, it should have been made clear. But it was like, even when we first started this, almost a year ago, um, we were going to come in Desperado to Seven Buttes and we were going to connect Wigwam to the thing. The first thing, everybody started to say, "You, you're going to use the HOA roads?" Yeah, no. Who's going to pay us? You know, that's what it came, you know. I said, "Your roads are crap anyhow. We're going to, we're going to make them better." And, um, so that's when we came in with redesign. I mean, this is before we brought it to, um, planning and zoning, but we said, "Okay, we'll get the permits from the state." Which we did. We, we filed applications. We got the permits. And actually, one of the, one point, the fence is cut. We rolled it back. We put a temporary gate in because we were going to start building the entrance. And I mean, I could call it a driveway. I mean, I could still build a house in there.
Well, like I said, it's been remanded back to planning and zoning. They'll look at it. Staff will look at it again. Bring the issues that you heard, the concerns that you heard from this panel, this committee. Bring those, address those concerns if you can, okay?
Well, we can. I just didn't want to bring the personal, okay, you know.
You, you don't need to bring the personal, but bring those, those.
Well, that's what these people are doing.
It, and.
And I thought you guys could decipher between, you know, what, you know, some.
There's more, there's more to it than just the concerns, the, the VOR easement and all that. There's other things that needed to be addressed, not just what everybody was saying up there at the, in opposition, okay? So if you can, if you can address our concerns.
Which we can.
And take that to the staff and take that to planning and zoning. Again, we're not saying you never can subdivide. We're just saying we have concerns and that planning and zoning needs to relook at this and address those concerns, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just have one statement. And that's this. No matter how thin a pancake is, there's always two sides. And I wanted to hear your side. I had mentioned it. So when you come to one of these, I would, I would suggest you give your side. Stand up for when everybody's in here and just like the chairman has said, because we would like to have heard from you. I, I wanted to hear from you. I, you know, I, there is a lot of stuff that was said that has nothing to do with your subdivision. I know how to discern.
Well, I didn't know what somebody was going to address, like, um.
Well, it's, it, but I'm just suggesting for future deals, you stand up for yourself. You're, you're a citizen. You're part of our constituents. We don't make our decisions, uh, cavalierly. We want to hear the truth from everything and we want to apply what's appropriate. That's, that's what we try to do.
Right.
So thank you for stepping up because, uh, I'm like the chairman. I wish you would have had something to say earlier and we may have gotten to the bottom of some of it a little more clearly. There's a couple of things that I think that I do want our, our planning commission to comment on so I can feel more comfortable about it. And we'll get that and you get that done and you'll be back here and you know, we tabled these things before and the people have subsequently got what they wanted once they've shown us that, you know, they're reasonable people and they're doing the right thing.
All right.
Thank you again, sir.
We'll be back.
Commissioners, vice chair. I'm Casey Coats of Field Creek Ranch, 5458 Coats Road. Um, thanks, Mr. Hagler, for commenting on the roads. The winters up there are brutal. I've personally walked out in snow up to my waist to get to work time to time and snow will build out to get my wife from time to time, so. And Commissioner Frill, I'm sure you have worked many wrecks right down there at Robertson Road. Um, so yeah, it's a dangerous place, especially when we start talking about heavy truck traffic. I'm going to switch back to some of the water issues right now, some things you guys haven't heard. Um, so in 1994, the University of Wyoming received a report discussing the karstic groundwater conditions of a severed Madison aquifer in the Casper Mountain area of Natrona County. Uh, if you're not familiar with what these systems are, karsts are distinct geological formations created by the dissolution of soluble rocks. This dissolution can and does result in a number of surface substrate, uh, surface and subsurface features, including sinkholes, caves, disappearing streams and springs. Karsts are important because they can hold vast quantities of groundwater and they contribute to the establishment of unique ecosystems. The risks associated with karsts are that they can run the risk of subsidence, which is, um, you know, sinking like we talked about there and that they are highly susceptible to contamination. Moreover, insofar as karsts, such as that along the face of Casper Mountain, boast interconnectedness, the risks of water table alteration due to surface mining in feature prominent areas like Coats Road, like Squaw Creek, like Field Creek, like Web Creek are, it's entirely too prevalent. The Field Creek Ranch can testify to the fragility of these karst structures having once lost flow as a result of a neighbor digging into the streambed of Field Creek Ranch. All said, given the facts provided, there are no simple solutions to the potential of groundwater loss as a result of mining. Drilling, as it's been mentioned, may or may not provide a viable water resource attendant to geological features if they are sufficiently disturbed. It's important to note that in the early 2000s, a number of goose egg residents who similarly enjoyed the waters of the local karst along the mountain lost their water wells and springs when a new well was being drilled and unintentionally struck a karst void. This was remedied to an imperfect extent and it is noted that the water quantity has not been the same since. Residents in the area discussed the fact that, um, mud, drilling mud was noticed even at Speed Spring near the fish hatchery. I'm going to close by stating that karstic environments are key to the issue of mining along the face of Casper Mountain. Because if we as a community do not adequately manage these features, we stand to welcome irreparable geological and ecological harm. As a community, let's avoid the pitfall of creating solutions to problems that do not have to exist right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else? Now you got new information, right?
I always bring something different. Uh, Jason Knope, Edge Engineering, forty-seven sixty Ross Ridge Road. The gentleman before me just more cemented the conduit side that I always talk about that's up there that we, we constantly talk about how we get our water to our, to our residents and to our lands. Um, prior to the, the last meeting I discussed, you know, that the Mr. Truett offered to donate a well to the non-existing body that doesn't really exist um, and can't collect, collect taxes. But they might get a well. So that's nice. So I looked at what it would take to actually put together a public water system for the Squaw Creek area. And there is, there is city water. They did extend city water to zone two A on that side. And I think I was with the city when they did that out. But they don't go any higher like zone three, which they just did on the east side, zone four, which is going up higher on the Casper Mountain. And that's how you get water pressure.
So I'm going to hand out an estimate to each one of you. I figured there's twenty-eight houses currently there. There's potentially thirty lots. But we didn't dive into that potential additional water usage. But if you take the thirty lots that would be uh, cut off of some water, so they couldn't actually drink, that puts us at a fifteen thousand to twenty thousand gallons of water demand per day for thirty lots. So that kicks you into a clarification and a dis- disinfection system and a storage system. So we'd have to store fifteen thousand gallons, which is our peak use per day. It doesn't kick us into the fire protection, which is a fifty thousand gallon use per day uh, requirement. So it doesn't quite kick us into all that pressure. So we don't have enough pressure where we're going to locate these wells because we're not going to put them up above mining, the mining location. So then we're going to have to boost it up. So I've got you the cost of what it would take to drill the two wells. Create your pump house, create your piping system, your disinfection system and your storage system. Then you have to get your booster system in there and you have to pre-create your distribution lines and then your feeder lines. And then you got to get your meter pits to each house. And then you got to connect each house to each one of these ones. And I put in here about a ten percent contingency because this is a thirty thousand foot estimate. I haven't got to actually sit down with each resident and sit down with all the homeowners to see what the actual demand use is. It was only calculated on a four bedroom house based on thirty lots. So this is a thirty thousand foot elevation estimate based on supplying a public water system, which would then need to have a public board or some sort of a public distributions, district system that we could actually tax everybody because HOAs have no way to actually get money from anybody. They can put a lien on, but they can just get mad. So that's all I had to present today was just this updated cost. I did run this through CEPI as well to get some sort of uh, uh, professional backing on what my estimate looked like. And they were, said we were right in line with what, what they would expect something like this to take place. Um, design fizz, if we were to start right now, you were telling me to start this project right now and I was to work through everything. We probably could be done construction deemed by December of next year. So just to let you know the timeline of what it would take and the effort it would take to get this project through. Thanks.
Any questions? Do you give this information to the state board, state landlord?
I'm going to plan on attending that Thursday up there for that meeting.
I, I'm, I'm asking you, have you sent them a copy of this with your letter explaining this and what he said?
I just completed this today. So I have not sent it to anybody but you, you gentlemen today. I've only been individuals that.
So when are you going to send it to them?
Well, I would like to take it up there with a letter and present it personally and hand them everything on Thursday.
Might be good to send it early. They'll have a chance to read it and then you can explain it. Won't take you the whole ten, twenty minutes.
No, I can put something together tomorrow and get it off to them beforehand. But I definitely think presenting things personally is a little bit effective and handing them the paperwork to follow through as well. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you, what new do you have for us?
I just have new signatures.
How many?
Uh, we're, well, my name's Carolyn Griffith and I live up on Coats Road and we're up to eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five signatures. I feel like it's a contest or something now, but, but anyways, uh, the, the only other new information I have is that uh, the, the Casper Mount Preservation Alliance had requested to uh, be on the agenda for the state board, uh, state land board. Uh, we did get granted fifteen minutes of that. Uh, our attorney, one of our attorneys, Marcy Bramlett, will be presenting. And uh, they do have their information and, and we're at the end of the agenda. I don't know that they're going to allow for public comments so that I think your recommendation for Mr. Knope to send that down in advance is uh, is good advice. But that's the only information I have this evening. And thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Nobody else wants to speak? All righty, well, commissioner comments in. Oh, do we have one more? Ah, knock in.
Didn't see me. Andrea Stroman, forty-one forty-five Coats Road. Um, just had a question, sitting back there and listening to the approval of the Burton Lee subdivision on Squaw Creek. The logic of the approval without knowing what's going to happen with the gravel pit? The investors who might be trying to build the subdivision and sell parcels? What kind of disclosure are they going to have to have in the future? Just a rhetorical question. Thank you.
That was just a splitting of a lot. It, it wasn't, it wasn't a really a new subdivision. All they did was increase the sizes of the lot between two lots so that they were both in conformance. There, the houses are already there.
There is no new building.
No.
When they started talking about water deaths.
No, that's, no, that all, all they did was make it conforming.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lard? Why don't we rent the uh, event center and have Carolyn and everybody get organized and bring all eight thousand seven hundred and sixty people up there and we'll have the hearing up there. I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to leave it at that.
Commissioner Frill?
College National Finance Radio starts on Sunday. Uh, everybody, um, well, a lot of people started coming into town, uh, getting everything set up at the event center. And ticket sales are well above where they were last year, last three years in a row. We've outdone it every year. It's just continuing to grow. Um, and I can tell you, there's things on the horizon for next year. They're going to make it even bigger yet. So if you haven't got tickets, get out there and get them now.
Thank you. And I have.